Alderman Holmes.
Here.
Alderman Tindham.
Here.
Alderman Grover.
Here.
Alderman Rainey.
Yes.
Alderman Burrus.
Here.
Alderman Fisk.
Here.
Alderman John Patis.
In the hall.
Win, Alderman Win.
Here.
Alderman Wilson.
Here.
We have a quorum, welcome to the Saturday, October 23, special city council meeting. City manager, we have a budget presentation.
And I, if you could, the light switch is at my place, so. Madam Mayor, members of the city council, good morning. Thank you for coming together today to begin the process of the review and ultimate approval of the fiscal year 2011 city of Evanston budget. We're going to talk a little bit this morning about my view of the state of where the city of Evanston is currently. Like to talk a little bit about the successes that we've had in the past year, some of our future challenges, and then we will get into a rather complete overview of the proposed budget focusing most specifically on the general fund, but also talking about other funds, and then move forward with your questions and comments. The schedule for the budget discussions was something that the council, sitting as the rules committee, reviewed at your meeting earlier this month. Today is the first of these meetings, this is presentation only at the council's direction, there was no provision for public comment, the council is saying that they wish to have some time to speak amongst themselves as we first start off this budget process. The next meeting is scheduled for two weeks from today, on Saturday, November the 6th, starting at 9:00 AM. That will be the formal public hearing on the budget under Illinois law. The council is required, I have a notice, public hearing, so any and all interested parties who wish to bring comment before the city council will be able to do so during that meeting. At the conclusion of the comment period, the council may choose to begin deliberations on the budget. All of these Saturday hearings have been scheduled to begin at 9:00, and it has been the council's past practice to have the sessions end around 12 noon. Then there are two optional budget discussion meetings, one would be on Monday evening, November the 15th, and then a second that same week on Wednesday evening, November the 17th. Members of the public will have an opportunity to speak to any budget items they wish to speak to during the regular public comment period for our city council meeting, both on that Monday and Wednesday. Then on the regular meeting of Monday, November the 22nd, we would have a truth and taxation hearing, another requirement under Illinois law, and then we're hoping that the city council will consider adoption of the budget at your regular meeting on Monday, November the 22nd. The final meeting in the sequence would be your regular meeting on December the 13th, and that would be the setting of the property tax levy. So those are the sequence of meetings. Today, we'll start with presentation, allow the council discussion amongst itself, and questions to staff, the public hearing in two weeks, deliberations on the 15th, 17th, and 22nd. Before I start the state of the city overview, I noticed that many people here this morning concerned about the mental health board allocations, and we've discovered that there was a typographical error in the transmittal letter that indicated an incorrect number for going forward in the current year. The correct number is $600,000 in the budget, and we'll explain more in detail for that error, largely 10-month versus 12-month, and also a reduction in funding from the township of Evanston, but that number is $600,000, which is much more close to the current level than the number that was. Well, don't clap for a typo, ladies and gentlemen. But we will explain that more, certainly the council is always interested in the mental health board allocation, and I'm sure there'll be further discussion, but before I went any further this morning, I wanted to make sure that people found that out. It was brought to my attention last Saturday during the United Way Day of Caring, as I was lugging wood chips at one of the member agencies that receive funding, and the executive director was kind enough to point that out, and we did some research over the course of the week and discovered that error. Anyway, let me move forward with the state of the city of Evanston. Clearly, the recession that is impacting the national economy and our regional economy continues to impact the city of Evanston. I think the best we can say about the recession is that we have seen at least the decrease in the reduction of our revenue sources to a level point. So while we have not seen the turn upward yet, I think we have seen the decline, at least for now, stop, and that's a very good thing. We have tried through the last year and the current year, and now proposing going into 2011, to continue to examine very closely our expenditures, and to curtail those expenditures and look for service efficiencies in any way possible. As all of you know, I spent the first 22 years of my career in the state of California, where raising taxes is not an option, and so my proclivity is always first to look for efficiencies and effectiveness within the organization before looking for new revenue, and I think we've been able to accomplish that in the 14 months I've been your city manager, and we are proposing to continue to do more of that in 2011. Our operating expenses related to personnel continues to rise, and I think this is one of several red flags that we have to look at as a community and as a city government, not only as we look forward to 2011, but beyond, and that is the salary, pension benefits, health insurance costs for our organization are very high and remain high, and we're in good company with other local governments, other government organizations within the state of Illinois and elsewhere, and we need to continue to grapple with that and try to get a better handle on that. The city was successful during our collective bargaining process for the contracts that are in place and will end December 31, 2011, to really curtail the significant rises in salary that we were experiencing. Pension issues remain a problem for us, and we'll talk a little bit more about that later. We've also been able to contain somewhat our health insurance costs, but those also continue to climb. So that will remain a watchword for us in making sure that we manage our personnel costs moving forward. Budget transparency is a continued priority of this council, and for a second year in a row, we had community budget workshops, this year, two of those workshops. I think the process is still a work in progress as to the best way to share information with the community and then have them provide input to us. The internet is an important piece of that, and I think as we move forward next year and beyond, I hope that we can really be a model, not only in Illinois, but around the country, for our budget transparency and how we involve the public in the budget process. As we look forward to the coming year, again, personnel costs remain an issue for us, and we are proposing no merit increases for non-union employees for a second year. We are also proposing that the three unpaid days that have been negotiated for our ASME employees would extend to our non-union employees. The Teamsters who represent the police officers and the fire union will be foregoing holidays or floating holiday time for a second year, so those reductions that were in place in this current year are moving forward next year. I am proposing that 2% of the 5% salary reductions for directors be restored. When we did our budget at the beginning of this year, we were ahead of the curve in dealing with salary reductions, straight salary reductions for staff, really as we've looked around at other communities, certainly there's been very few in Illinois that have had any salary reductions, and those nationally have not really been to the extent of 5%, and I think we are at a point now where it's appropriate to restore 2% of that 5% salary cut, leaving, again, now for a second year reduced salary, but at this time at 3%. And then finally, we are continuing to look at legislative changes to tighten IMRF regulations regarding wage reporting, and I think that will help our overall costs, and we remain concerned about police and fire pensions, and there has been some movement in these last days of the gubernatorial race, where candidates have come out at one point saying they were for reforms, now have backed away from those reforms, which remain, leave us very concerned, and the mayor has asked that we come to the council on Monday evening with an update as to where we believe things stand with any potential legislation dealing with police and fire pension reform in Springfield, and so on Monday evening, Matt Swankowski, our legislative coordinator, will be here to give an update to the council. In the upcoming budget, we are proposing a 3% increase in the property tax to fund the police and fire pension annual required contribution. Mrs. Earl will be here for the balance of the discussion and talk a little bit more about this. The council has also agreed to changes in our water and sewer rates, and part of the change with the sewer rates is also a property tax adjustment. However, we are now proposing that that property tax adjustment not occur in 2010, but occur in 2011. We believe that we can sell bonds next year to fund that capital need and not require the property tax increase until 2011, and again, Mrs. Earl and Marty Lyons, our city treasurer, can fill in the details there. But this morning, as we present the proposed budget, we are proposing the 3% increase to fund only the police and fire pension. There's no proposed property tax increase for general fund operations, and again, the state of Illinois is in a huge mess, and they likely will have to start addressing that mess after the elections in November, when the general assembly comes back for their veto session, but also more likely after the first of the year, and it really is unknown what those impacts to the city of Evanston will be, and that is something that we are going to be very carefully watching. Mayor Tisdale and I are already scheduled to be in Springfield on the 16th of November as part of a delegation from the Northwest Municipal Conference and the Illinois Municipal League to make sure our voices are heard during the veto session regarding the state of Illinois finances, as well as police and fire pension reform. So this is something that's going to be on the top of our list through the balance of 2010 and into 2011. There are many successes this past year. I think oftentimes, because of budget, because of the challenges we face as a community, it's sometimes easy to overlook the successes, but we've had many successes this past year in the city of Evanston, and I'd like to just talk about a few of them this morning. We really have readjusted how we budget and how we operate the city government around the council's goals. The council, a year ago, September, adopted 12 goals to really guide our operation, and this past September added a 13th goal for 2011, and those are listed here on the screen, and many of them will be talked about during the course of the morning and the course of the budget deliberations. But it's so important for your staff to have these goals in place, so that we know where you would like to see the city government going, where you would like to help lead the community, and these now 13 goals, I think, very well encapsulate where we're headed, and hopefully will provide us a way to really measure our successes in 2011 and beyond. The area of public safety, we are very fortunate to have a great high level of service provided by the Evanston Police Department and the Evanston Fire Department. Again, we tend sometimes to focus on other issues here in this chamber and throughout the community, but in the background, we have very high levels of service in our police and fire departments, and that is something that not every community can boast about, and I think we need to continue that, we need to continue to invest in our police departments and our fire departments to make sure that we're providing a great service. But there's a caveat to that, and that is that we can't necessarily continue doing business completely as usual. We need to continue to explore efficiencies to make sure that we're providing that service at the best cost and service patterns possible, and I think we need to measure ourselves against other high-level service areas and communities to make sure that those efficiencies in both the police service and the fire service are adopted in Evanston as it makes appropriate. I also believe we need to explore non-tax revenue support to assist in these operations, and one of the things I've asked Devon Woodard, our new development officer, to do, working with Chief Kleiber and Chief Eddington, is create a police and fire foundation, and that would be an organization dedicated to raising money from the private sector, from individuals, to support our police and fire department, likely with equipment most at first, but other operations and special programs as well, in order to make sure that we're looking at every revenue option possible for police and fire. We've also been working closely, Matt Swankowski, our intergovernmental affairs coordinator, has been working with our lobbyists in Washington to identify funding sources in the federal government for both police and fire, and that will continue, and as opportunities arise for us to work regionally with our neighbors in areas of police and fire, we are going to continue to do that. But by and large, public safety is a tremendous strength of the city of Evanston, and it is a strength that we should continue to support at the highest levels possible. Economic development, the council in setting its goals, why you did not prioritize your goals, you clearly made a point of economic development being a priority for this city, and in the last year, I think we've made great progress in moving some of these issues forward. The council in January adopted an economic development plan, which provides a sort of a guidepost for us as we move forward. We have added two economic development planners who have divided their time geographically to work very closely with our neighborhood business associations, Downtown Evanston, Evanston and Venture, and other business groups, to make sure that we are working on the issues of business retention, as well as business attraction. We have lots of Evanston businesses who have been here a long time, who have been through the ups and downs, and those are the businesses that have paid the taxes, that have helped us provide the needed services we need in Evanston, and we need first and foremost to support those businesses that are here. But we also need to make sure that we are doing everything we can to attract businesses to Evanston, and as I know the council is aware, there are several initiatives working right now throughout Evanston to make sure that as we identify properties, buildings, that they are brought to their highest and best use to help support economic development in the city of Evanston. We're also working to make sure that the community and economic development department remains as business-friendly as possible. When a new business or an existing business comes to the civic center and looks for assistance, we want to make sure that we're as welcoming as we can be. We can't always move mountains for them, but we want to look for ways we can be helpful rather than tell them the reasons we can't be helpful, and I think we're making a change there. The area of citizen engagement, perhaps the biggest new initiative that we have taken on during the past year, and certainly will be a major initiative for fiscal year 2011, we've taken our existing resources in the areas of citizen engagement and put them under the direction of our assistant to the city manager, Joe McCray. With that, we currently have our public information, volunteer coordination, outreach to community notifications, as well as our work on our website, all under Mr. McCray's direction. I think we've seen a lot of good synergy from that in the six months or so that that's been in place, but there's a couple of new initiatives that we'll be starting, which I think will also help complement that. One will be the launching of a mass notification system in likely at this point, December. This will allow us to reach out to residents by telephone, by email, by text message, based geographically, for any number of emergencies, incidences, be it a broken water main, a police activity, a fire incident, really whatever makes sense to reach out to folks. We will now have the ability to do that by leaving a telephone message, recorded telephone message, email, text message. Lots of communities have been doing this for a very long time, both here in the Chicago area and across the country, and I think it's a very natural piece of technology to add here in Evanston. The next piece of this is probably the biggest initiative that we're looking at for 2011 in the city of Evanston, and that is the activation of our 3-1-1 system. The council gave initial authorization to move forward with the planning of this with this year's budget. Mr. McCray has led a staff team over the last many months, working on how to launch a 3-1-1 system. This will be a telephone number that people can call from 6:00 AM to 11:00 PM, seven days a week, to get information and to initiate work orders to address issues in the community. Currently, we have telephone numbers for people to reach, but we have no ability to take those requests and actually put them into action. So the advantages of 3-1-1, I think, will probably be to provide better customer service, will be increasing the amount of time that we spend available to our residents by 30% by the telephone. In addition, these services will also be available online, 24/7, but it's more than just a phone number. It's a way, it's a commitment to the community that we are going to provide service within a specific timeframe, and that we are going to measure ourselves and report back to the community on our ability to do that, and part of that will be through a series of service-level agreements. We plan to come back to the council in January with the proposed service-level agreements, that we will have for you probably two dozen, maybe three dozen, different activities that we provide on a regular basis, and we are going to commit to the community a specific timeframe for the delivery of those services. So if someone calls and wants a trash can repaired, that we will respond to that and deal with the request, let's say, within 48 hours, and we will measure our ability to do that and report back to the council on a quarterly basis, are meeting that or not. We believe it's very important to be accountable, and one of the great things about 3-1-1 is it makes all of the services that we deliver accountable, because we'll be able to measure those, we'll be able to ultimately compare ourselves against other communities in the delivery of those services. It also allows for less bureaucracy. Right now, to stay on the example of a trash container, you might have to go through three levels of staff, to go from when the person calls to the person that actually delivers that service, and it's our goal to really eliminate that to one level. So when the person calls 3-1-1, wants that information, it'll go into our computer system that will then allocate that service request right to the people who deliver the service. And over time, we think that the cost efficiencies and effectiveness that we'll get will allow us to better deal with any further reductions in city services by being able to provide all of our city services more efficiently. It'll allow us, I think, to look at the resources we spend at the police department currently on 911, since about 50,000 calls a year to 911, are calls that will now go to 311. They are non-emergency calls that come into our 911 system, so I think there are opportunities there. There are also opportunities with our police service desk to make changes over time. We're not proposing any reductions in 911 operators or at the police service desk at this point, because I think we want to live with the system for a little while first, but I think there are efficiencies there, and as many of you know, I was at the National City Managers Conference in California earlier this week, and in the 3-1-1 session, I saw many familiar faces of city managers from other areas that are interested in 3-1-1, and there may very well be contracting in opportunities for us to provide this service to neighboring communities. We've also this morning launched a website to help answer some questions and give people more information about 3-1-1, and that can be found at cityovevanston.org/311. Reorganization of city service delivery, another, I think, success. It's not all about cutting, it's not all about adjusting fees and revenues, but it's also about working smarter, and here is a list of the changes that we've made in the past year, which I think has helped us accomplish that, the creation of a Department of Administrative Services, the creation of a Department of Utilities, taking functions that were in multiple departments and reorganizing them, putting the responsibility for our youth programs and senior programs citywide, and a renamed Department of Parks, Recreation and Community Services, refocus of the, what was the Evanston Health and Human Services Department, to an Evanston Health Department to focus primarily on the health of our residents, to consolidate the liquor commission responsibilities and administrative adjudication on the law department, and the renaming of our Department of Community Development to a Department of Community and Economic Development to allow us to focus more on economic development and service consolidation and efficiencies there. A next success, I think, is our relationship with Northwestern University. Certainly, we've had our ups and downs as a community, as a city government, with Northwestern over a long period of time. With the arrival of President Martin Shapiro, I think we've seen some real tangible changes in our relationship. The funding of the new fire engine, as all of you are aware, we're using more Northwestern students in city offices, either as interns or groups of students working on class projects. We have much greater cooperation in the area of economic development, and I really believe that one of our great growth areas will be to take those businesses that are being created by Northwestern faculty members and have them come to Evanston. Right now, they don't come to Evanston, they go to other area communities, because those communities have been more welcoming to them, quite frankly, than we have been, and I think that is changing, and I think the university is now actively working with us to make sure that as those businesses are being started up and employees are being hired, that the first place those faculty members look to have these businesses in the city of Evanston. Greater cooperation on student neighbor issues, I think we still have a long ways to go there, but really at the urging of the city council and the three ward aldermen that represent the Northwestern neighborhoods, the university has hired a new assistant dean of students whose job specifically is to work on student neighbor issues. There is a ongoing dialogue that continues. And then the last piece on here, I think, is the ongoing issues with the university as a landowner, and the impacts of their property purchases or their development plans on neighborhoods. I think the council has done a great job in keeping those issues in the fore, and certainly as a staff, we're trying to be supportive as much as we can on those issues. But all in all, I think we can count the improved relationship with Northwestern as a success from the past year. However, with successes, we continue to have future challenges, and I'd like to talk this morning about six challenges that I see the city of Evanston facing as we move forward into 2011 and beyond. The continued funding for quality of life services is the first area I'd like to talk about. We cut nine and a half million dollars out of the budget last year, we're proposing $3.2 million reduction here for 2011. Madam Mayor, members of the council, we're running out of things to cut without significantly impacting the quality of life of the citizens of Evanston, and the decisions that are going to be before the council in the future are very, very difficult decisions, and I hope that after the first of the year, we can talk about what process we would go through to come up with the next round of cuts, and the next round of cuts beyond that, because certainly if the state of Illinois makes any adjustments, if they really deal with their budget problems, they're going to come to the cities and villages of Illinois and take money from us, and when they do that, what do we cut in order to accomplish that? The four departments on the screen are those that provide, you know, a lot of our quality of life services other than police and fire, and that's Parks, Recreation and Community Services, library, public works and health. With the cuts we have made, and they've been serious cuts, I think by and large, we've been able to continue to provide good customer service, good quality services to our residents. Additional cuts are going to make that very difficult, and what's more important, a well-maintained lakefront or trimming trees? What's more important, paving streets or work in our health department? These are very difficult decisions, and as a community, I think we're going to need to talk about them as we move forward. Next area, which I've already talked about, is salary, health benefits and pensions. I've already spent a fair amount of time on this subject this morning, and I don't want to beat it too badly here, but again, the slide says it all, we have agreements with most everyone through the end of next year, but beyond that, where do we go with salaries, benefits, health insurance? It's going to continue to be a major issue for us as we move forward. Next issue is the increase of non-tax revenue support for services. If we are going to be reducing expenditures because of decreased revenues and raising taxes is not the solution, then what else can we do? And I think increasing non-tax revenue support for our services is a key component, and the slide lists a few things that we have done in this past year, which we'll continue to work on, the appointment of a volunteer coordinator to increase the use of volunteers in delivering city services, continue to be aggressive about the sale of treated water to surrounding communities, development of public-private partnerships, and certainly what we're working on right now for the Robert Crown Center, I think is an important model for additional projects that we would want to consider in the future, the appointment of a development officer to raise funds to support city services, and then the appointment of an intergovernmental relations coordinator, who has, I think, already had some great successes in our relationships in Washington, Springfield, and the regional government agencies around the Chicago area. But we need to be aggressive, and I think we have plans and personnel in place to be able to make some significant impacts on increasing our non-tax revenue. The issue of library services remains an important one in this community. The revenues that we have for city services remain tight, but I think also, as a community, there's been a great discussion about what is the role of library services, and how best to move forward with library services in difficult times. And with this proposed budget, I am recommending that the city close the North and South Branch libraries on February 28, and reallocate those budgeted resources for branches to support the main library. These are difficult decisions, but when I look around at other communities, really the focus has been on program. I think we also have issues as far as collection, but the focus has been on program. A couple of times in the last several weeks, a few community members have mentioned an issue of this very magazine, and this is Public Management Magazine, the magazine of the International City County Management Association, and the cover story was "Public Libraries Daring to be Different," and some community members have encouraged the review of this magazine, so I just want to share just briefly what this article talks about, and it talks about a lot of very exciting things that libraries around the country are doing. In Fayetteville, Arkansas, a community of 72,000, they are putting solar panels on top of their library and using that as an educational opportunity to top of their library and using that as an educational opportunity to work with children to talk about the importance of sustainability and solar power. Georgetown County, South Carolina, a population of 60,860, using natural disasters from Hurricane Hugo to talk about climate change, to talk about what the community was like before a disaster and after a disaster and using cross-generational programs to do that. The city of Dallas, Texas, using programs to help children read. And the city of Santa Ana, California, city of Santa Ana, California has a population of 355,662 people. Their library budget is 3.2 million. Our library budget for 75,000 was 4.3 million. You know, money's important, but programs are important too. And I think what this demonstrates is that good library services are not dependent on buildings. Good library services are dependent on talented staff, creative community members, and I hope that as we move forward with the Evanston Public Library, that we can do some of the things that our sister communities around America are doing and that is to make libraries a vibrant, exciting place, again, that aren't dependent on physical location, but instead focus on programs. The Evanston Township, lots of discussion in the community budget workshops, now two years in a row regarding the continued existence of the township and the location of the township offices and I raise this as an issue because clearly through the community budget discussions, it's an issue that many residents are concerned about. And then finally, the area of tax increment financing districts, TIF districts, we have several of those in the community. As we look at potential options for funding as we move forward, we have talked internally about the issue of refunding money. There's at least one TIF that would have that ability, certainly the city of Chicago is talking a lot about that. I think our recommendations to the council, and we'll come back to you after the first of the year to talk further about this, is to use that money to invest in the areas that are, if they're not in the TIF, that are at least near the TIF. And I think with both the Howard Hart Tree and Howard Ridge TIFs, there are opportunities to remake those two TIFs to have a greater impact on the southern part of Evanston. So those are the future challenges, those are some of the good things that are happening. And again, the perspective of spending three days with my colleagues from around the United States earlier this week is that we are in much better shape than nearly every other municipality that I talk to around the country. As difficult as that may be for us to comprehend, there are cities and counties around America who are in much worse shape than we are. And we have a strength and resilience as a community with multiple funding sources, with a dedicated community, with a lakefront, with Northwestern University, with two wonderful hospitals, with great neighborhood business areas that really set us apart from other communities, not only in Illinois, but around the United States. And I think as we move forward with the fiscal year 2011 budget, there's a lot to be excited about because I think even with difficult budget times, we still provide a tremendous quality of life for the residents of Evanston. So with that overview, I'd like to ask Joellen Earl, our Director of Administrative Services, to come up and talk specifically about the proposed budget and we'll walk you through our proposals in order to balance the budget. This is Earl.
Hello.
Hello.
Good morning, Madam Mayor, members of the city council and Clerk Green. I'm going to provide the budget overview, as the city manager said, as well as the strategies to bring us into balance. This is a summary of where we are right now with the budget. The figure is just over $191 million, including interfund transfers. One thing I want to point out here is that we have not provided you to date with a capital improvements program. It is expected that we'll be doing that shortly, but that number will most likely change. If, well, I shouldn't say most likely change, it may change depending on what you want to do with CIP. The general fund revenues are projected at about $72,500,000. The expenditures are a little bit higher than that. The deficit is about $3.1 million. We have come up with a little more than that with regard to the deficit and a reduction strategy, which leaves a balance of a little over $76,000. Here is a summary of the actual from '09-10, the adopted budget, what we're estimating for this year and the proposed budget. As you can see on the estimate, we're hoping to come in with a positive ending balance of approximately $400,000, but then carrying into next year, the deficit is almost $3.1 million. You can also see the vast difference in the numbers between the estimated actual and next year and the reason for that, as you know, is because we are proposing a 10-month fiscal year, starting March 1 of '11 through December 31st of '11. There's some highlights that I wanted to provide for you with regard to the general fund. As we talked before, we really looked at three years in preparing this budget for you just simply because we needed to really make sure that we were analyzing how we receive our money and how we spend our money. So in order to do that, we looked at the current year, the year that we are proposing for the budget and next year. Another highlight is that solid waste has now been moved to a separate fund, a separate enterprise fund. We'll talk a little bit more about that. As again, I already highlighted, we're hoping to have about $400,000 turned back to the general fund at the end of the year. And as we spoke in September, there are some strategies that we're using right now to see that that happens. We have been asked to freeze our hiring, except for certain positions that would have the approval of the city manager. Every time we have a vacancy, we are looking at reorganization, efficiencies and whether or not we can make any changes. We have an expenditure control limitation right now. Any expenditures of $1,000 or more are required to go to the city manager for approval. Training and travel has to be approved by directors and anything out of state needs to be approved by the city manager. And anything related to overtime, we are just making sure we're scrutinizing before we spend the money to see if we can reduce our overtime. And then again, the projected deficit for next year is about $3.1 million. Highlighted in the proposed budget is 12 additional FTEs for 311. It's eight full-time and eight part-time additional positions. And just to digress for a minute there, the test, well, actually, the number of applicants for those vacant positions was about 500 and about 300 people came and have started the testing process with the city for those vacant positions. The net elimination in FTEs in this budget is 9.65, of which 12 are vacant. Also, in preparing the budget, the city manager was very clear with the directors with regard to efficiency and effectiveness of services, which aligns with the city council's goal. So some examples of that that have been proposed are specific to parks and recreation here. One area is changing the hours of operation at noise slightly. Actually, it's by 15-minute opening time, which saves some dollars, as well as closing the office at noise. And then the second area there is the elimination of some full-time and some seasonal positions in parks, recreation and community services. And again, we'll go through those specific recommended cuts, but all of the cuts that I'll be talking about that relate to changes in operations aligned with this goal, which has been set by the council. The next one is a reduction in the tree budget in forestry and then deferring a portion of the Dutch elm program. This slide and the next slide goes through the specific positions that are recommended for reduction. The first one is the switchboard operators, which are being eliminated because of the 311. And you see that there's two FTEs listed there, there's actually three positions, one full-time, two part-time. The public safety systems administrator, it's not the exact title of the job, but the reason why I left it that way is because that is a vacant position in IT. And right now, we have a sworn officer doing a lot of the assistance with IT services for laptops and equipment that is specific to the police department and it's working out very well. So we are going to take the reduction on the admin side, continue to support the overall services like the cameras, you know, the cameras on the buildings and the larger IT projects.
Excuse me, Joellen Alderman-Raney has a question.
It would seem to me that the best practices around the country are to take sworn officers out of the building and put them on the street. And what you're arguing is that it's a better idea to take our sworn officer and have him fiddle with IT issues? I don't underst-
I'm not suggesting whether or not that's the best use of the officer. What I'm suggesting is that that has been working in our police department. We have recruited for this job on more than one occasion and we have not found a successful candidate. Because of the nature of the work that this person is doing and the understanding of police operations, it has been preferable to use the person who has been completing the work and keeping, staying in this position.
I guess you probably have to be familiar with the cameras that we have, especially those on the south end of town, to know that this is not working. Because I have, you know, among things that I'm dissatisfied with, those cameras are a number one on my list. So I, you know, I just don't know. It would seem to me that we should really think about having sworn officers doing clerical and technical stuff inside the building. I mean, if you want to train them on how to shoot a gun or, you know, how to detect drugs or investigative issues, fine, but IT issues, I, and another thing, teach all the cops how to use the IT, but have them, I just don't understand that at all. It seems to me a very poor use of person power. And I also have questions about a comment that the city manager made about 311 and 911. So if you could put me on the list after Joellen is finished, I'd like to ask him about his comment.
Will do.
The next position listed is actually two positions in admin. They're the parking enforcement officers, both of which are vacant. And we are proposing not to fill them because we are moving to technology that will allow the officers that we have in the field right now to be more efficient. So we don't need the positions. And we will be coming back to you with a proposal to procure that technology in the upcoming year. The human relations specialist in community development and the following two positions, the executive secretary to the non-department head and the zoning administrator are all proposed to be eliminated, two of which are vacant. And that has to do with reorganization and additional efficiencies in the Department of Community and Economic Development.
Alderman-Raney?
I'd like a memo from the city manager regarding the wisdom of eliminating the zoning administrator. Issues are starting to pop up in our effort to pursue economic development enhancements that seem to me to require a zoning administrator. So I'd like some good thinking on that from our city manager.
There is a part-time clerk two in the health department. The position is being eliminated because the duties align with 311. The outreach and community relations coordinator at the library is currently vacant, it's being eliminated, or actually, I'm sorry, it's not being eliminated, it is being reduced by half, a portion of which is to support 311. The remaining half-time position will stay in the library to provide additional administrative support. The next several positions, it goes on to the next page, are in parks, recreation and community services. There is a clerk three. There's a building supervisor, which is vacant, that are both proposed for elimination. And then we move down into our facility maintenance workers and some parks, forestry workers. And you can see the FTE count, in some cases, is more than one, but we do have some vacancies there as well. We are proposing elimination of the inclusion specialist because those duties will be reassigned to another person. And the public information assistant will also be eliminated, the position is vacant. In the police department, there's a records clerk that has been vacant over a year. We're proposing elimination of that job. We have an engineering associate retiring at the end of the year, actually in mid-March, mid to late March, so it's really part of, we're funding it into March of next year, at which time we propose elimination of that position. And then there's a clerk three, or I'm sorry, clerk two in public works, which is a three-quarter position that is being eliminated for 311. The last two positions in water, the water worker two is vacant. It actually has been eliminated in the current budget, but I'm not sure, and in talking with Dave Stoneback, we can't remember if we actually highlighted that for you last year, so we wanted to make sure you knew that we actually did eliminate a job in the water department. And it was vacant. And then the water billing clerk is a full-time job that is proposed for elimination, again, for 311.
Alderman-Raney?
Yes. I've been here quite a while, as some of you know, and I'm having a difficult time looking at these positions and understanding exactly what they do. So to tell me that a clerk two in the health department is being eliminated doesn't mean anything to me unless I know what a clerk two in the health department would be doing. So, because I'm very concerned about services being provided in a timely and efficient manner to our residents. So if we could get, and I don't want the job description completely, but a brief commentary about what each one of these positions does, that would be really helpful. I mean, not a big line, not a big paragraph. Couple sentences.
Certainly, and we can do a paragraph or so long.
Couple sentences.
I mean, for example, we have two positions in the parks, recreation and community services department.
I have no idea what they do.
They say inclusion specialist and so people were concerned as to which one that was, for example, so.
But I'm concerned about them all. So if you could just tell us briefly what each one does.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Alderman Jean Baptiste?
Thank you very much. My question was similar to Alderman-Raney's question, but particularly the inclusion specialist. I think you need to give us a rationale for that because I think it came out of, you know, the city trying to be as open and receptive to the needs of the disabled community. The other question is a process one. Will we eventually hear from the department heads as to how these eliminations will impact services in their specific departments and how they're working to find a way to make sure they're continuing to deliver the services?
Madam Mayor, Alderman Jean Baptiste, we're prepared this morning to walk through in general terms the answers to those questions and answer specific questions as the council would like.
Okay, so no, you will not have each department head come and explain?
That's not our plan for this morning.
Okay, fine, then what I would suggest is that you get us, in the explanation of the work that these entities do, can you also put it in the broader context of the functions of the department, how we intend to compensate?
Absolutely.
What, how it would impact services?
Absolutely.
Because, you know, you may not be able to compensate for it, you may evaluate that we could lose these services.
And it is a mixed bag, depending on the position. Thank you.
Alderman Wen?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I think, sort of piggybacking on what Alderman Jean Baptiste said, can we also have an analysis in terms of which of these positions, what the possible revenue reduction would be in terms of eliminating these, some of these positions? I know that some, a couple of these positions are in place in departments in which we gather revenue. So I'd like to understand what the impact would be, a cost benefit analysis of that elimination. elimination.
Go ahead, Joellen, thank you.
I'm going to go through the other funds before I get to the deficit reduction strategies for you, but I'm just going to explain what the fund does, or highlight what it does. For example, on the special revenue fund, these funds have a special revenue source or tax that is not based on a fee-for-service model, and there's a list of these funds, many of which are in community and economic development, many of which are grant-funded. And the first one, the homeless prevention and rapid rehousing program, is a new fund that the city is setting up in the current budget. The second one, the neighborhood stabilization program, is the $18 million we're receiving from the federal government, and that is being implemented in the second year. We have the motor fuel tax fund, an economic development fund, neighborhood improvement fund, affordable housing, home, community development block grant, community development loan, and special service district four. One thing I also want to talk about is the fact that we do have staff that really does a very good job administering these funds. We have done a lot of work this year in the budget, making sure that all of the funds are set up appropriately. The chargebacks, depending on whose time is in the fund, is very accurately calculated. And a lot of this, you'll see in the inter-fund transfers. That said, we are going to continue with that type of analysis in the next year on all of our enterprise funds and TIF funds. So, it's something that we want to chip away at and just really review what we're doing. So, it's a project that we'll be taking on in admin in the upcoming year for those other two areas. The next group of funds are our debt service funds, and these funds account for tax levies involving long-term financing or tax increment financing. The first one is the general obligation debt, and this is used to fund a lot of our CIP, or I should say, a portion of our CIP that is not funded from other revenue sources, special service district area five. And then, there's the list of the tax increment financing districts, which follows. Those are all examples of our debt service funds. Our capital projects funds, there's two areas. One is the capital improvements fund. We got a late start on the CIP this year, just because of the timing of it and when we were able to come back to city council. When we do come back and talk to you in depth about the CIP, there will be several projects that we'll be carrying over to next year. We also are very aware of the general obligation debt portion of the CIP, and the direction from the city manager is to come back with something that is as pared down as possible. So, we're really spending a lot of time working on that and making sure that we come back with something that we feel is very important to fund. So, we're expecting to come back to you prior to your next meeting with a CIP. And I can tell you what you will see in it, are projects that will be funded from other sources, such as motor fuel tax or water and sewer revenues. There may be some general obligation, but again, that portion of it will be very pared down. So, it should be not as comprehensive as what you saw this year. The second area is the special assessment fund, which accounts for the 50/50 alley improvement program. And we could possibly use some of that fund balance to offset the cost of some other capital improvement programs, although we haven't made any final determinations yet, and we will be talking to you about that further. The enterprise funds are listed here, and as you can see, we've added the solid waste as the fourth enterprise fund. You've just approved a 10% rate increase for the water fund, which should stabilize the funds in the water fund. Sewer is going, or continuing at lower than anticipated revenues. As the city manager said, we will be borrowing a little bit for some sewer projects. We do expect to come back next year in the proposed tax increase and suggest that 0.7% tax increase be levied in order to pay off sewer bonds, which is about $280,000. Again, that's not in the 2010 levy, it will be proposed next year. The parking fund is relatively stable for all parking, including the parking decks, the three parking decks that we have. This year, we're going to be looking at parking deck maintenance, and we'll be doing that through the winter, under the direction of our parking manager, Mr. Voss. And then, the last area, as I said, is the solid waste, and this is a new fund. And I'll talk a little bit about this more as we go forward, and you'll see it when we get into the deficit reduction strategies, but the general fund will need to subsidize the solid waste fund. We have a projection of $350,000, which may be conservative, but we have projected that subsidy from the general fund for the upcoming year. The last area I'm going to talk about are the internal service funds, which are the fleet and insurance funds. One of the strategies that we're looking at for the fleet fund is the ability to turn back unused funds for the fund balance. We know in the current year that we cannot purchase all of the vehicles that were recommended, so we will be recommending that the money that would go into the general fund stay in the fleet fund to start a fund balance there. And again, this is something we talked about with you in September, but it's our recommendation that we try to start to build these fund balances. The insurance fund is similar. We don't have a fund balance in insurance. We are working diligently to do that. The insurance fund, as submitted in the proposed budget, includes all costs to absorb probably a 10% to 12% increase in the health insurance fund. And also, because we are a member of the IPBC now, the Intergovernmental Personnel Benefits Cooperative, we are trying to build reserves there as well. And again, the long-term strategy is to stabilize our health insurance costs. One of the things that we do realize, unfortunately, with position reductions, is that we're not insuring as many people. As I said, in the proposed budget, there are 12 vacancies, and those, you know, the cost of family PPO health insurance is over $18,000 a year. It's a significant cost in our budget. So, we are, we are working very hard to, with our collective bargaining units, with the IPBC, and to make sure that we're stabilizing our costs. Another thing I wanted to mention is that when we entered the IPBC, it was for 19 months. The rates were stable through next July, at which time, we will be looking at the increase. And we will be coming back to the council in the spring to talk about whether or not we renew our membership for another three years. And we'll be giving you a lot of information about the progress we think we've made by being a part of that larger cooperative. Also, as you know, health, workers' compensation is costing us, unfortunately, a significant amount of money. We are working with our safety committee and working, you know, continuing to try and come up with strategies to reduce our costs there as well. And actually, there is one more fund, the pension fund. As the city manager said, the annual required contribution increase for next year is 1.2 million, which is proposed to be levied as part of the taxes, which is a 3% increase. So, that is proposed to be levied in 2010. As a result of the most recent actuarial report, that amount will increase to 1.8 million next year. So, when you combine that with the 0.7% increase in taxes for sewer, you get up to about 4.5 for pension and sewer next year. And as the city manager indicated, the Intergovernmental Relations Coordinator will be here Monday night talking about it, and again, will be pursuing strategies to reduce the pension obligation, if at all possible.
Alderman-Raney?
Joellen, when, if somebody had just tuned in on their television set, they would have heard you say something like, "The increase in the pension fund is 1 point something million." I think it's important to note what the total, what the total levy is going to be, and I'm looking at it right now, for the police and fire pension that staff is recommending, and which is really legally required, for 2011. And that would be, according to the chart I have in front of me, approximately 11 million, no, actually, $12 million for the debt, the pension levy for 2011. $5,158,000 for fire, and $6,867,000 for police.
Yes, thank you.
So, it's not as good as, I mean, that's about, what? That's several million dollars over 1 million.
Thank you. Yes, the 1.2 is the increase in what we are required to fund, so.
And so, when, I mean, I just think the number is so stunning that it's important to bring up when people in the community are blogging about the fact that the council is being irresponsible in levying for and funding the police and fire pensions. If the community would like us to levy $20 million, all we have to do is have five members of the council agree to do that, but you're stuck with that. And I don't think, I don't think we have the capability of levying more than 11, 12, 13 million dollars. I mean, I just don't see how, when we have a total general fund of, what, 30?
190 million.
How much?
190. Oh, general fund, 72.
The general fund, yes.
For next year.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
Well, it's on, it's on top of that, but you're.
It's just an amazing amount of money, and it's probably just going to go up until it goes down.
And I'll make sure in the future I talk about the whole obligation.
It's just so huge, it's almost difficult to comprehend.
I don't know what Matt is planning to say on Monday, but I think this might be a reasonable time to report in from the Northwest Municipal Conference Legislative Committee and from the mayor's caucus, that the governors, both candidates, have changed their positions or have positions supportive of continuing the pensions as they are, or possible reform, which has been proposed in Springfield. The reform would include penalties for any community that was funded below 50%. We are currently funded at 41%. The amount that you're funded is impacted by the amount you predict you can raise in revenue from investments, and so, we are, because we are conservative in our revenue predictions, we are quite low in funding percent, and because we didn't always fund it as much as I wish we had. But the predictions of penalties as part of a pension reform package would cost the city of Evanston millions of dollars more. So, those predictions are very bad for us, and that's what all pension reform discussions are including. The Northwest Municipal Conference, to their credit, was considering supporting pension reform that included penalties for communities under 50%, and I said that impacted us, and they dropped those discussions immediately. But those are the discussions that are being held in Springfield, just to add to the general gloom. Alderman Wilson?
And I'm just going to, you know, repeat what I keep saying over and over again, but that is, a lot of people have concerns and are voicing their opinions and telling us a lot of things that they're interested in having addressed. But again, this is the single biggest item that people out there watching might have some ability to, you know, have some impact, as far as your legislators are concerned. And what I've seen, you know, re-proffered by Springfield doesn't really help us, and it's likely to hurt us, particularly in the short term. So, people really need to voice their opinions, and just seeing a newspaper story indicating that there might be some pension reform, you have to read the whole article. You know, pension reform to somebody might mean penalizing the city of Evanston for, you know, several or many millions of dollars a year. And, you know, you think these cuts are painful, you know, wait till something like that passes in Springfield, and there's not going to be anything we can do about it. We're just going to have to be cutting more things. So, I really wish people would start focusing, in addition to the things that you're personally concerned about, focusing on that big picture. So, that's my two cents for the day.
That's all the editorializing that Don and I plan to do for the moment.
And then, there's just a few other fun highlights I wanted to provide for you. Again, the homeless prevention and rapid rehousing fund is new this year, and it is available to provide rent and other assistance to people who fit the guidelines. We are continuing to implement the neighborhood stabilization fund. We, property acquisition is underway. Bids will be reviewed in the fall and into the early winter to begin rehabilitation of acquired properties. Again, the CIP is expected to be issued prior to your next meeting on November 6, which is the public hearing on the budget. And lastly, the solid waste fund will need to be subsidized by the general fund, and at least $350,000 in the first year of operation. This pie chart, I think it gets to your point a little bit, Alderman-Raney, because you can see the police and fire pension fund at the top. Now, this pie chart will change a little bit, because you can see at the very bottom, next to the yellow piece of the pie, there's no piece of the pie for the CIP right now. So, at the top, it shows where we are with regard to the total budget for the 10-month period, which is about 191 million, and then, how it breaks out through all of the funds. Obviously, the largest portion is the general fund. Oh, I'm sorry.
Alderman-Raney?
Joellen, does that mean that, on page 11, the proposed budget overview, the deficit of $3,093,000 does not include the expenditure of CIP?
That's correct. That's just for the general fund. The 3.1 million is a general fund. So, as I said, with the CIP, we're going to be bringing that separately, and, you know, we'll be looking at the proposal, as you recall from last year, we had it separated by funding source, you know, general obligation debt, water fund, sewer fund.
But what I'm asking, in the general fund is debt. I mean, that's levied on our tax bill, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so.
But Alderman-Raney, it's budgeted differently internally.
Are you going to talk about the $3 million?
Right now.
Oh, okay.
The next portion of the presentation is the recommended revenue adjustments and expenditure adjustments, which starts on page 35, slide 35. Some of these revenue adjustments, we talked about in September, and they're being recommended as a result of a survey that we did on taxes with our neighboring communities. The first one is a transfer station fee at $2 per ton. Three-quarters of that revenue for the 10-month, because we will receive three-quarters, is It would be $300,000 for a full fiscal year. The gas tax, again, it's $170,000 per penny, and we're recommending a penny increase as a result of the survey. You may recall, Skokie's at 3 cents and Chicago is at 5 cents. 10/12ths of that is 142,000. The electric utility tax is interesting. There's many different rates charged, depending on usage. And what the recommendation on the electric utility tax is to increase it to the state allowed maximum. That 83,000 is a conservative number, because there's so many different rates, depending on usage. We feel very comfortable that in 10/12ths, we could easily collect an additional 83,000. And we would really have to analyze it over time, depending on what we receive from the utility company. The right-of-way fee, if we increase that permit fee. The right-of-way fee, if we increase that permit fee, we're, we're estimating about 100,000 in additional revenue. And then there's some additional ones which follow. If we increase the beach token fee, it's estimated to receive an additional 34,000. There's two revenue estimate increases, one of which relates to fundraising, which is directly related to the development officer's position. And it's estimated that he will bring in at least 45,000 next year as a result of his fundraising efforts. Also, coming to you shortly, we, I was hoping to have it to you in October, but it looks like it'll be in November, December. We are going to bring on another collection agency to continue to work at collecting all of the money that's owed to the city. We have a team right now that's down to two providers and they're, they're doing their final analysis and it will come back to council. So we're hoping that by working well with the, with the agencies we have that collect the money on our behalf, we'll be able to increase that revenue as well.
Joellen Alderman, Shaw Baptiste has a question.
Did you say that the new development officer, we expect that he will raise 45,000 dollars this coming year?
Yes.
Did you say we expect that he will raise 45,000 dollars this coming year?
Yes.
Is that, city manager, this is our ceiling, our top goal?
No, this is our floor.
Or what's the story? Okay, then what, you guys need to get us some, you know, his strategy. Where is he going? Because the salary is not going to match it.
He's scheduled to present a work plan to the council on November 8th.
All right, because that's, you know, to make sense.
I, I don't want to budget money that will, will not come in. We feel at this point that that's a floor, not a ceiling.
Okay. We also need to be sure that the investment of their salary is going to bring about some return.
And if it doesn't, we will not do it.
Okay. So we'll hear all about it on November.
On November 8th.
Okay, thank you.
We are expecting 20,000 dollars in support from the township for youth programs. And then the last revenue I want to talk about in relation to the Dutch Elm program recommended deferral. The, there's an amount that we'll get to under Parks, Recreation and Community Services, which is a deferral of a portion of the program. We have a restricted fund that has been set up for Dutch Elm. And what the recommendation is this year is to take some money out of that fund and use it to fund the Dutch Elm program at the amount that you see there, which is 263,000. The original request was, I believe, 93,000 dollars, more than that. It was, I think, close to 360. And we'll take the corresponding cut out of Parks, Forestry and Recreation and defer that portion until next year. The long-term idea here is to spend down that restricted reserve, which has close to 400,000 in it, to support the Dutch Elm program fully this year, partially next year, and then in the third year, you'll have a, a flatter amount to maintain the program.
Alderman Rainey, do you have a question?
Yes, I do. I'm, I have a request and that is, while this all sounds like arithmetic, I'm, I'm not certain I completely understand the impact, if there is any, on the Dutch Elm injection program. So I would like a memo regarding the math and the program and the implications of one and the other. Okay?
So that is the revenue side, as far as the recommended revenue adjustments. And then on the expense side, I'll go through by department. And again, the, the expenses that were put together here, the reduction strategies were as a result of the direction of the city manager, again, to focus as much as we could on efficiency and effectiveness of operations. You'll see through here in a little bit more detail, some of the position reductions, whether they're vacant and for what purpose, but we will give you more detail as you've requested. But there's a little bit here. Under the city manager's office, that's where the three switchboard operators are, and those positions are being eliminated for 311. Also, under the city manager's office is the recommendation to restore two of the 5% of the director's pay reduction, and that's why you see that 30,000 in parentheses, because it would actually be an increase.
Alderman Rainey.
When, when a person dials 866-5000, all right, no, no, 328-2100, what's going to happen? Are they going to get an operator to direct their call to the manager's office or to the mayor's office or to the clerk's office?
It will go to 311 and if they would like us to transfer them to a specific office, we will do that. If they would like us to solve their problem, we will solve their problem.
But what if they just want to chat with somebody and they don't have the direct number? Will, will there no longer be 328-2100? That's what I.
No, that, that will ring to the 311 operators. So we will, we will either transfer it, if they wish to be transferred. Lots of people call that number not knowing where they're going to go and that's the beauty, one of the beauties of 311. If we can solve their problem, we'll solve their problem. But if they want to be transferred to the city clerk, they'll be transferred to the city clerk.
Well, you have to listen to that insipid message that, that says, you call 328-2100 and the person says, if this is a police emergency, you know, I mean, if it's a, that's really ridiculous.
As of March 1, there will be no longer a voicemail. So you will get a live person from 6:00 AM to 11:00 PM, seven days a week. If you call 328-2100.
So far, that is, that's the first plus I've heard of 311.
So there will be no, for, for those, those hours we're in business, there will not be voicemail.
Excellent.
Under administrative services, all of the positions are vacant. Again, there's the technology position as well as the two PEOs. And again, the, on the PEO side, we'll be coming back with the software enhancement, which is a license plate recognition software, which will make the work of the PEOs out in the field a lot more efficient. And that's why we, we think we can, or we know we can eliminate these two positions.
City manager.
And let me just say a word about this. We will come back with more details, but what we have, we tested and actually Mr. Lyons and Mr. Voss went to, was it Arlington County, Virginia, several months ago, and that's a program that we're modeling, is it's a camera that we put on top of the vehicles. And what the camera does is the camera reads license plates. And so what the PEO does is drive down the street and it reads the license plate and if there's an outstanding ticket or if their vehicle's been there longer since the last time they came around, a little bell goes off and the, the violation pops up on the screen and the PEO was able to then write the violation. So we'll be getting away from the chalking of the tires. We'll be actually able to increase the collections of outstanding tickets. We have the Denver boot that some of you have complained we don't use enough. We will now be able to use it more because those people who beat the threshold to have their cars booted, we will now automatically know when this camera runs the license plate as we drive by. So we're, we're cognizant that this is important from a parking and traffic safety perspective to keep this enforcement up. We also understand there's certain revenues that come in. We believe that these reductions will not impact either our ability to manage traffic and parking issues as well as will not impact our collections.
Alderman Shaw Baptiste.
As you, we on television, can you explain what the threshold is at this particular point in time? Do you know?
The threshold for.
For booting.
Five.
Five.
Five outstanding tickets. And, and we, we have not done a good enough job of, of going after those folks. And that's not only from a boot perspective, but if you've noticed in the revenues, we are, we are not doing as good a job as we can with collections of overdue tickets. I mean, that, those balances are approaching half a million dollars, people who owe us money for violations. And so the number that we posted on the screen was a relatively modest number. Again, a floor, not a ceiling. We would hope to collect lots more with outstanding tickets and violations and we'll be coming back. Mr. Farrar is here somewhere, was here, and we'll be coming back to you with some adjustments to the, the fine process soon that will make that a little bit easier.
Moving to community and economic development, the recommended reductions are, again, three positions. And you can see with this list here, we did indicate how long the positions have been vacant. So if it's, if it's not vacant, then there is an incumbent in the position. Under fire, it's the chief's recommendation to change the deputy chief rank back to a division chief rank, and there will be three division chiefs. That will save 20,000 dollars. Also, a reduction of overtime by 10% and you can see the, from 291 to 262, that will save 29,000. And the chief and I talked about this, because we're anticipating retirements and vacancies, obviously the newer personnel won't have as much time to take, so he feels comfortable that he can take this reduction without an impact to services. Further reductions from that may, depending on when we can fill vacancies, but right now, that's the recommendation with no impact to services. On health, the .4 clerk in the vital records office is the clerk that is being eliminated for 311. And then on the mental health board, the, the funding in the budget is recommended at 600,000. And let me clarify this. We were hoping to receive a revenue from the township for the mental health board. And when we were compiling the budget, we hadn't, we didn't have that information to include in on the revenue side. So we found out basically the day the budget was transmitted to the council that that revenue would not be forthcoming. On the expense side, we had an expense in the budget for the full funding. So that expense is still in the budget. It's on page 85 of your budget. The amount that was put in as a placeholder was 10 twelveths of the 0809 funding level, which is 737,000. What the recommendation is, is to fund at 10 twelveths of this year's funding level, which is 600,000. And we went back to the township records. The township is transmitting, from, from the information we received, 325,000 to mental health board agencies this year. The city is transmitting 385,000 for a total of 710. If you take 10 twelveths of 710,000, you get 600,000, which is level funding. So that's what's recommended and that's what will remain in the budget. The 25,000 is if you want to take an additional cut to the 600. So, but there is 600,000 for funding for the mental health board.
And Madam Mayor, members of the council, Mrs. Earl, just to be clear then, so we have made up the lost revenue from the township through other general fund revenues. Is that correct?
Correct. The other reductions make up the, the funding that will not be forthcoming from the township.
Thank you.
Alderman Rainey.
Is that, Joellen, is that reflected in, in the deficit on page 11 or whatever page it was?
The.
On page 11 or.
What, what it impacts, the, the 3,93,000 deficit, there is an additional 137,000 sitting in the health budget right now. So, so the number you would look at is on one of the very beginning slides where I went through how much money is available in the balance, which was 76,000. You would add the 137 to that. So there's, there's more of a balance, we're recommending more of a balance than what is reflected on that slide. So it's closer to 200,000. And, and the recommendation would be that that stay as a contingency or fall back to the general fund. And the reason for that, as the city manager indicated in, in his opening, we still don't know what's happening with the state. So any available funds that we have, unless you choose to apply it elsewhere, could stay in as contingency or fall to the general fund balance. But the 600,000 is level funding from what the mental health board is receiving this year, at 10 twelveths. The next area is the law department. The deputy city attorney's position is suggested to be changed to an assistant city attorney. That is a lower level position and as a result, there is a cost savings there. Also, one of the clerical staff in the law department primarily does work on property and liability insurance. So the recommendation is to move that position to the insurance fund and fund it through the insurance fund, where there are chargebacks to all departments for claims and the cost of administering those claims. So we're recommending we move that position to be funded through that fund. The library, again, the .5 FTE reduction is half of a full-time position that has been vacant for 18 months and the total there is 32,000. Parks, Recreation and Community Services, there's many listed here. As I indicated before, the noise cultural center opening by postponing it by 15 minutes, 45 minutes, thank you, it would save 6,000 dollars. Reducing the hours at Mason Park drop-in program, 6,000 dollars. And again, you know, the, the list here, that recommended cut is based on usage. So the director felt that based on when people are utilizing the program, that that reduction could be made and not adversely impacting the people that are participating in the program. There is a recommendation to reduce the reduction in tree purchases by 50%, which is 85,000. The reduction in the Dutch Elm program is 93,000. So as I said before, if you add that to the 263, that was the original request for this year, and by deferring a portion of it, we would save 93,000. And the 93,000 is 25% of the program, to get back to the question that was raised before. The next one is the reorganization of some schedules at Crown and that would save 15,000. The elimination of the full-time clerk at Ecology and replacing it with the part-time clerk actually does not save 48,500, but the reason why that figure is up there is because while we were preparing the budget, we realized that another part-time job, which was the part-time ombudsman that we only funded for four months for this year, was actually included to be funded next year. So this, we're just going to transfer the funding for that job to fund this part-time clerk. So we can take a cut of 48,000, but that was the easiest way to show the cut.
Alderman Rainey.
Who, who is the constituency now for that position? We, we no longer have Linda Lutz, right? And, I mean, we, I'm just wondering how, could you just give us a memo on how this whole thing works? And also, the former director has advised us that this is something that she's very much opposed to and I, I thought her, her comments were very reasoned and if we could get more information. I mean, it's, and also to go to Alderman Wynn's, any revenues here that are important?
The next reduction is a recreation maintenance position, which has been vacant for one month. Two facility maintenance workers, three positions, one of which is vacant. Two parks forestry worker, three positions, one of which is vacant. A parks forestry worker, two, the inclusion specialist and the part-time public information assistant, which is a halftime position and has been vacant for four months.
Alderman Rainey.
Well, I know I asked earlier about information about duties of people being eliminated or not included in next year's budget. And that would go for right here too. And I, I mean, if any of these have anything to do with maintaining and cleaning our parks or lakefront or anything, I mean, that, that too is very worrisome. The way our city looks is just really, really important. The way our city looks is just really, really important. And sometimes our parks don't look so good. I mean, we have great equipment and good intentions, but they don't look so good. So I would urge the council to take a look at the parks and their ward before we vote to eliminate these.
Alderman Fisk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Joellen, is the staff position at Noyes included here? Am I just not seeing it?
That is a potential additional reduction, which I'll get to, and they're not recommended, but I'll get to that one.
Go ahead.
Okay. Moving on to police, we are recommending the two police officer positions remain vacant after, as a result of attrition into next year. The 120,000 only represents salaries. It's not recommended to cut the officers, but rather hold them open for the next fiscal year.
And Madam Mayor, members of the council, perhaps a word of explanation to this. What I've asked Chief Eddington to do, and certainly he can speak to this at the council's convenience, is to manage through the cash value of those two vacancies to 120,000. So he has full flexibility through the course of the year, if this reduction is approved, to manage this as he sees fit. This is not a matter of identifying two positions and just merely leaving them vacant, but it's really, it's a deployment issue. And so as long as the cash value of those positions are identified, it is at his discretion as to how he gets there.
Alderman Rainey.
While we're on it, something that I keep meaning to ask for, could we have an update on all the major crimes that are unsolved over the last couple of years?
We'll do that separate from the budget memos, if that's all right?
Well, I...
Or would you like it as part of it?
I'd like it as we're considering the budget.
Very good.
Alderman Jean Baptiste.
Alderman Rainey, I know you said last couple of years, but I think we need to go back a little further.
A little, I mean...
Yeah, two.
Three years, five years?
Five, because there's some stuff that happened on Howard. And I think on Darryl Dewey, that dates back before that time.
And Madam Mayor, members of the council, we're happy to do that. We're happy to do that. It may not make the timeframe, because our hope is to get all the budget questions out to you by the end of this coming week, and we may not have that piece by then, but we'll keep you posted. But we'll shoot for five years as quickly as we can.
Okay, fine.
The next position is a vacant records clerk. It's been vacant for over a year. And then there is a recommendation to civilianize one of the sergeant's positions, which is the training officer's position. And that position's been vacant for six months. Moving on to public works, this department has sustained the highest amount of reductions. Although it doesn't show in the bottom line, it's because we are netting out 350,000 due to the fact that we need to hold that money aside because we're anticipating we're going to have to subsidize the solid waste fund. And you can see that, that's the third number down. But as a result of the implementation of the solid waste changes, we should see a $500,000 reduction in the upcoming year, which includes the elimination of one vacant equipment operator, too. And that 500,000 is the 10-month savings. In addition to that, because of those changes, the solid waste fleet maintenance can be reduced by $100,000. So those two go hand in hand. The next one is an actual addition of 350,000 to subsidize the operation. So if you add the 350 to the 543, we get over 800,000.
Alderman Rainey.
Can you remind the community, Joellen, as to when the solid waste changes and the yard waste changes and the recycling changes are going to take place in terms of, you know, in our alleys and on our curbs?
November 1.
November 1. So as of November 1, we should all see city trucks collecting our recycles, recyclables, and who, can you tell the community, who will be collecting the yard waste and the...
It's Groot.
Groot, will be doing both?
Yes. Yes, correct.
And there will be no change to the days or anything?
No, the schedules will be the same.
Alderman Burris.
Just to follow up on that, also, with the change, there may be some problems with the new trucks for the collection, that they might not be able to make it down some of the alleys. And I know that Director Robinson will put out, if you have to change your garbage from the alley to the front, because the trucks can't make it down. So that may be just something to keep your folks aware of, and she will keep everyone informed. Am I right on that? Thanks.
Just what I love, garbage cans and...
And Madam Mayor, members of the council, if I could just...
When did we know that?
Maybe, Ms. Robinson, could you come up and, I think that last piece is not known to come up here?
Yeah, nobody told us about that.
Sorry, I didn't mean to bring up the center of arms.
No, I mean, that's important. The last thing we need is more garbage in our streets, so...
Good morning, everyone. I'm Suzette Robinson, Director of Public Works. The recycling, Groot collects, currently collects recycling curbside for several areas where their garbage trucks cannot fit down the alleys. They are, as a part of the contract, purchasing some of our garbage trucks, which they hope to use on some of those routes. But as a result, their trucks are bigger than ours, so there may be some switching of those that have curbside recycling, whose garbage carts will need to be collected on the curb instead of the recycling. And then the recycling will go back in the alley.
But when are we going to get that information about where those places are?
It's not going to impact the collection initially, because they will get collected regardless. We won't find out until after they actually do it where the problem areas exist. So it won't impact the ability for the pickup. So everybody should put their garbage and their recycling where they normally do. And then we will address those residents on a block-by-block basis with a flyer directly.
Alderman Rainey.
I would like you to address the Alderman and the ward directly also, when you find out those locations.
We will do that.
Alderman Jean Baptiste.
When did we know this? Because there's a mess, okay? It may sound good, and with all due respect, I know you've, you know, been very creative, but, you know, it sounds like it's going to be a big mess. So when did we know this, and why wasn't it presented at the time that we were considering what options to choose?
Well, I did mention it early on that we would have to switch, because I think there were residents that actually asked that question as a part of the presentation. Right now, we only have about 10% of our collection that happens on curbside. Now, understand, there are people, 10% of the residents, that already put their garbage out in the parkway, because they don't have alley access. Nothing will change for them. There's about 5% more that may be impacted, because the alleys are too tight for the trucks to make the turn. Not, but, like I said, initially, they're going to have to make the adjustments, they'll back down the alleys in order to have people still put their containers where they normally do. But, and they're going to come back to us and identify where those problem areas are.
Ms. Robinson, just to be clear then, so as of the change, nothing, as of November 1, nothing changes, correct?
That's correct.
And when change will occur, we will notify the residents and the council? And we estimate the percentage of customers impacted approximately?
Approximately about 5%.
So 5% of our total customers, and the other 95%, well, there'll be no change whatsoever?
That's correct.
Alderman Rainey.
I'm very concerned about the 5%. For a five-year contract, Groot should have been made to drive every single one of our alleys to determine in advance what alleys couldn't accommodate their truck. And that, I mean, that's a very simple position to have, it's not complicated. They should have been made to drive every alley. We were, we were just, you know, we tried to get out of the five-year contract, we couldn't. That should have been a negotiating point. You drive every alley and tell us what 5% you're not going to be able to get down.
Alderman Fisk.
How soon will we be notified which alleys and our wards are affected?
Within the first two weeks of operation. So by November 15th, we'll know who needs to change. And just because Groot is...
We don't know that now, we can't...
No, because Groot is already in the alley collecting recycling. So some of those, so they have already driven the alleys, in essence. So, but there are locations that, out of preference, they moved recycling to the front, not because they needed to. So we are going to make them or hold them accountable to collecting in the alleys the garbage, where before, because it was recycling, out of convenience, we allowed them to move to the curbside.
Okay, so the concern is not only the width of the alleys, but also the sharpness of the turns?
That's correct.
Thank you, I don't see any further lights.
Okay, so again, just to recap, the first three items are related. There's the change to the service delivery model, which is a savings of 500,000 for the 10 months. Hands-in-hand with that is a reduction in the fleet maintenance, because there are less vehicles. And then we add back in 350 because of the subsidy. Then the next area is an overall reduction in fleet expenditures, and the idea there is to review the fleet plan, to continue to look at efficiencies, and to reduce the expenditures associated with the maintenance of the fleet.
Alderman Rainey.
Yes, Joellen, where does the...
Where does the revenue from the sale of our vehicles to Groot go? What, where does...
I have to check that, I'm not sure if it's going to be a general fund receipt, or we'll put it into the solid waste fund. I'm not sure what the mechanism is, so I will check that.
And could you tell us the total amount when you figure that out?
I think I know, but I don't want to say it, just to make sure I give you the correct information. The next item is the chargebacks to the CIP for engineering. We are going to look at that to make sure that the costs associated with engineering all these projects are actually part of the CIP program. The next one, well, the next two are eliminations of positions. The first one is the pending retirement, and you can see the date is there, it's actually the end of March of next year, of an engineering associate. And then the part-time clerk, which is a .75 position for 311. Utilities, again, this only impacts the water fund, it's not in the bottom-line totals, but we wanted to highlight the fact that there was a water worker, two position eliminated in the current budget, and I just don't know if you were ever told that. That's why there's a zero there, because it's not in the budget this year, but it was done, and it was vacant. And then their water billing clerk position has been proposed for elimination for 311. So overall, the revenue adjustments, as recommended, are 962,000. The expense reductions for the general fund are just over 2.2 million. If you add the two of them together, you get 3.2. And if you subtract out the $70,000 for the water fund and the 76,000 that I talked about, which is the balance, you come up with a deficit of 3.093 million.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, before Joellen goes on to the next slide, I would also like to preface the next group of cuts. If you recall, last year, the council had a series of cuts that were recommended, revenue adjustments to balance the budget. And so what Joellen has just completed are our recommendations in order to do that. If you were to agree with all of those adjustments, the budget would be balanced, and we would move forward. We recognize, however, that through the deliberations that the council will have with the budget, that perhaps some of those items that are being proposed are not acceptable to the council. And so in order to make up that difference, we have provided the council with the list that Joellen will now be walking through of additional cuts, which total 794,667. Last year, we had a similar list for you. We encouraged you to make those reductions as well, and take that money and put it into either the police or fire pension funds or into reserves. And if you recall, that list was initially about a million and a half dollars. The council restored, I think, all but about 300,000 of those million and a half dollars worth of cuts, and that money was then put toward reserves. We are proposing something different for this year, and that is for this group of cuts, we are offering them as additional options for you, but if you choose not to take them, we would propose that those not be eliminated, and that they would remain in the budget. So this year, really, these additional cuts are being offered as options as you go through the first set, but if you choose not to take any of these cuts, then we would ask that they would remain in the budget.
Alderman Holmes.
I'm sorry, just to back up on the water clerk position, that's a $70,000 savings on a clerk position?
All of the positions include all costs with benefits. So it's the salary and the benefits. IMRF, it's completely calculated, rounded a little bit, but that's the full cost for that position, based on what the person's making now, the benefits that, in this, well, the benefits that the person is receiving, the city's contribution to IMRF, and any other costs related to having that position. So, and we've done that for every position listed here.
Okay, I can understand it, it just doesn't compare with any of the other clerk positions as we were going through them. So it just seemed a little bit out of whack for me, in terms of a clerk position. If you go back and look in the comparison...
And Alderman Holmes, members of the council, many of the other clerk positions that are above the line are not 1.0, they're not a full FTE, so that's also part of it. So while we're listing, while we're listing the person, the value of some of the others are not a full position.
I understood, I was just doing a little quick math in my head, and it's just, you know, a little bit out of whack.
Okay.
Alderman Rainey.
Except you said that the 120,000 for the two police positions did not include anything, any benefits or anything.
That's correct.
And it's listed, it's listed exactly like these positions. So maybe we need a little asterisk on those that are and those that aren't.
We will do that, to make sure...
And Alderman Rainey, those are the only two. And we're not eliminating the positions, that was the reason for the difference.
I know, but a person reading the budget wouldn't really know that.
We will make it more clear.
All right, all right.
Moving on to the additional potential reductions, if you look at the citywide reductions, if the cost of living adjustment that is currently scheduled for March 1 for non-union personnel is deferred for six months, it's a potential savings of 165,000. The Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund, as you know, we just refinanced the ERI debt, and we paid it off. We've saved some money there. However, we do have a restricted fund in the city that has over $2 million in it, and what we're recommending for this year, and really for the next years to pay off the ERI debt, is to take some money out of that fund and apply it to the IMRF obligation for the ERI. And we're recommending $100,000 for that purpose. And then the 76,000 surplus, positive balance, is how you tie the 3.09 to, if you add that in, and as well as the water fund, that gets you to the 3.2 million. So I just wanted to highlight for you that there was some money as a positive ending balance. When you move to fire, if you wanted to consider an additional reduction to overtime, there's corresponding figures to consider. However, if you do that, there will be a service impact. But it's broken out if you wanted to add an additional 5% or up to 20%. The next position reduction is a position that is filled right now, which is a clerk typeist position in the health department in vital records.
Alderman Rainey.
I want to go back to reducing further fire overtime. You said it would have an impact on service delivery. You said it would have an impact on service delivery. I'm sure you don't mean that overtime fires wouldn't be put out. So what services, what services would be impacted?
If, if, if we took the cuts, then there would be a, a more difficult ability to fill if someone was out, which would, could potentially reduce the number of people that were working on any given day.
Alderman Rainey, we'll prepare a budget memo with a more complete explanation.
It, it's the same issue from last year? And, and we'll, we'll give you some more detail on it? It, it's not recommended that we do that, but it is listed here.
I just wanted to know what that meant.
Okay.
Alderman Jean Baptiste.
Can you explain the difference in the salary of this clerk typeist? Who wasn't yet before?
Yes. Yes, it, well, in the, in the, we can go back and give you the exact figures, but we have, we have a host of clerical positions in the city, and there's different levels of pay. And also, there's, the people filling the positions have been with the city for different periods of time. So I can tell you that this clerk type is one, I believe, is the lowest level position we have. The water billing clerk, I'd have to look at it in relation to this one, but we will give you that detail.
Is this position not there?
No, it is not. Under Parks, Recreation, and Community Services, there are additional position reductions of the, another facility maintenance worker, three. Parks forestry worker, three. A potential to cut the senior taxi coupon program. If you did that by 10%, the cost would go from 216 to 194. If you eliminate the-
Alderman Fisk.
Okay. Okay.
Go ahead.
The secretary, two position at noise is listed here. And then the, the next one is the youth employment program, which is the summer youth employment program. And the estimate to reduce it by 7%, it would be a $20,000 cut, and you can see the different level of funding.
Alderman Fisk.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like a memo on the noise position. I'm assuming that this, this secretarial position serves the tenants at noise and not the programs. Is that correct?
We'll provide the information.
Okay. And I'd also like to know how many tenants there are, and the level of, the leases, their current level, and market rates for comparable lease space.
Alderman Grover.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Could we please include, when we're providing descriptions of the positions affected by the proposed budget, also those below the line positions that might be affected by the budget?
Alderman Jean Baptiste.
The youth employment program, I mean, some explanation.
I can't hear him.
Youth employment program? Please explain why we would move to propose a reduction there when we're looking to increase and, and the work, and have moved youth services to one of our priorities.
Alderman Jean Baptiste, members of the council, as I believe the council's aware, we've made an application through the CDBG process for additional funds. I think one of our strategies here is to change the mix of funding between the general fund and other funding opportunities.
Yeah, I know. And, okay, you still need to explain it, because it's going to be tough to, to get the level of funding that we're requesting from CDBG, because the category of services is limited, is very limited percentage of the fund that can be used for that area of work. So please try to see if you could explain how we get to the outcome we want to get to with this proposed reduction.
And Alderman Jean Baptiste, members of the council, let me reinforce once again that that, along with everything you see on the screen, are recommendations that only if the other $3.1 million worth of adjustments, we, we gave you almost $800,000 of additional cuts. We hope that you will only need a fraction of those in order to mix and match. So our hope is that the vast majority of what you see on the screen below the line are not things you're going to need to reduce, because we believe all of them are important, including that $20,000 for the youth employment program.
Alderman Tendem.
This is sort of, I guess, the same as Alderman Jean Baptiste. When we do have a proposed elimination, can you tell us not only what the position is, but how we plan to compensate for, for who's going to fill that? Will it just be a service lost, or is someone doubling up? Things like that.
Absolutely.
Alderman Rainey.
At the community development block grant allocation meeting the other night, we received the proposal from Parks, Recreation, and Community Services for the new youth employment program, which is close to $400,000 total. And while I know some of my colleagues thought it was a great program, I thought it was a huge, I, I have absolutely no confidence that this program is going to produce the anticipated benefits that some think. And I, I would like to make certain that all members of the council saw that proposal, or see that proposal, so maybe I can get some support on taking a look at the program and how it's being structured.
And Madam Mayor, Alderman Rainey, we'll be happy to make that available as part of the, the budget responses. I think one of the challenges we face with our youth employment program is that we are one of the few communities, really anywhere, that use general fund revenues for a program like this. If you recall, there was much discussion in the national press about the elimination of the funding that came from the federal government, and communities around America who had no program, because they were not able to support it unless there were federal funds. We have traditionally taken a different path here in Evanston, and have used general fund revenues to support a program that in many communities, there is no general fund support for. So I think what we're trying to do in difficult budget times is address a need in the community, but also to do it as creatively as possible from a funding mechanism.
Alderman Fisk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I need some more information on the, the elimination of the forestry worker, how that would affect the tree trimming schedule, what number of years we're deviating from the optimal six-year trimming cycle. I'd also like some information about the Dutch elm injection program and the restricted funds. Was I correct in hearing that that's a restricted fund?
I already asked for that.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. And I, I would just like some background information, maybe a copy of the ordinance or whatever created that.
Alderman Holmes.
I received an, an email regarding the youth employment program, and the question was raised, and when you talk about being creative, city manager, do we, have we looked at the possibility of, of working with some of the other agencies in the community that might be providing some of those same services? And could we do it cheaper and, but get the same results?
Absolutely, Alderman Holmes, members of the council. The program is now residing in our Department of Parks, Recreation, and Community Services. Mr. Gaynor is beginning those discussions. I think at this point, we do not have a good, complete answer for you, but it's a road we're going down. So I think in response to the proposal that Parks Rec made to the CDBG committee, we're looking at alternate approaches. And I think that this is going to be a transition year. We are proposing, for example, to have this be a year-round program and not just a summer program. And I think as doing that, working with community partners, youth job center, the school districts, both wise, I think make a lot of sense. And I know Mr. Gaynor has begun those discussions. I don't believe those discussions will be concluded as part of this budget process. But we really feel that we've not done enough in this area. We believe we're making changes to, to make a positive change, but it's a work in progress.
Alderman Rainey.
Well, I, I just want to leave the council with one thought. If the program were as creative as the funding for it, we'd be okay, but it's not. And I, I agree with Alderman Holmes, whatever email she got. We need to, we need to call together these organizations that are doing almost all of the things we say we're going to do, and see what services they can provide us. We fund all these other programs already. We can add a little, I, we talked about this at CD. We can add, you know, some significant support to them financially, and they can take over this program. That's my feeling.
Alderman Jean Baptiste.
Let me leave you guys with another thought. The response on the city, on the CDBG committee was not generally to, to see this particular proposal as being a bad thing. Many people thought that it was something that is worth funding. The question is whether or not we have enough money. And in the presentation, Mr. Gaynor did put forth the, the goal of working with all of the other service providers. In fact, he had a, a wheel, a graphic, that showed all of these entities and how that would be coordinated. Let me just say this to you guys, too, that these agencies that we've had in the community working for youth have not, I mean, they have done a lot of great work, but we continue to have a significant problem, and we have not been able to reach a lot of these youth who are in our police world all of the time. Again, let me repeat that we have about 40 kids who drop out of the high school every year. We have a number of them who drop out, but they are in the alternative school where they are warehoused, and nothing happens with them. And these kids ultimately come back out on our streets and with very little options. So I think that if any leader within our staff can bring about some of the deliverables that are promised, it is, you know, the leadership under Mr. Gaynor. So as you look at the proposal, look at it critically, and give your feedback, but let's not be ready to, to throw it out and, and punt it to the other agencies that have a specific niches that they take care of. They do their thing, but have not had the overall interests of youth in the community, and have not been delivering at the level that we need to see. So I agree, we need to be critical, but I think that we also need to be open to all possibilities. Thank you.
And then the last item on the list is the elimination of a civil engineer, which
is, the person is working in traffic engineering. So that brings you to approximately $800,000 in potential additional cuts to consider for the deficit reduction. And then just to summarize where we are at this point and moving forward, the public hearing on the budget is, is scheduled for November 6. And then you have two optional budget discussions on the 15th and the 17th. That's a Monday and a Wednesday. The truth and taxation hearing is scheduled for the 22nd of November, as well as the anticipated budget adoption. And then the tax levy adoption is scheduled for December 13. And then here's just a summary of what we talked about this morning. The city manager did the first part of it, and I did the second half. And at this point, we are happy to answer questions.
Alderman Grover. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Bobkowitz. Thank you, Director Earl. I have, in addition to the questions that have been asked so far, looking for more information to flesh out this budget deliberation. Could we also get information about the anticipated additional revenue for the pilot revenue, the payments in lieu of taxes? I think we're, the proposed budget anticipates new $42,000 in a 10-month year, and I'm curious about where it would be coming from. I think there's already some information coming to us about the 311 center. If we could also have information, more detail about the mental health board's proposed allocations for 2011? I don't know if we've completed the, the hearing, the public hearing process for those allocations, but it would be useful to see this year what the mental health board is proposing. Always good. If there's a way to get information about the cost that could be saved by moving township offices? What is the township's overhead? And what money could we save by bringing them in-house, so to speak? Rent and technology? And then as to the, the $100,000 transfer from the $2 million restricted fund for our IMRF ERI payments? Could I have more information about the fund itself and the plan for gradually adding back into the general fund from that? Please. Thank you.
Alderman Rainey.
Madam Mayor, could I ask either Joellen or the manager to- Oops. Could I ask either Joellen or the manager to go to page 43 of our online budget? And I'm not understanding something. On the, on the index, it's showing property tax levy summary schedule FY 2011. When I look at the chart in the budget, it's showing the levy for 2010. We have a proposed budget for 2011. Can we get the proposed levy for 2011?
Assuming I'm looking at her? No.
Here. Proposed levy.
Are you, 43?
It's page 43.
On the online.
On the online.
In the books, what's the heading on the page?
Are you, are you talking about just the general fund portion?
2000, I'm, I'm talking about this here.
Because it's not, it's-
Joellen, is that, is it the start?
The bookmark shows the, I'm just wondering why, if we have the proposed budget for 2011, let's see the proposed levy for 2011.
Well, the levy would, would be the flat amount on the property tax, which was the 16 million.
But could we have a chart?
Okay, we can give you-
I mean, I'd like to compare it across, I mean, we have from 2007, 8, 9, 10.
I'd like to know what you're talking about.
The proposed 2010 levy is what you will be considering in November. You will levy in 2010, collecting 11.
But we're doing a 10-month budget so that we are going to be levying in the same year as we're budgeting? Isn't that the reason why we're going to the new, to the new fiscal year?
Yes, it is. I guess I'm still unclear as to what information that's on the numbered page 37 or page 43 of the PDF that you're looking for, Alderman Rainey.
I'm looking for a column that says proposed 2010 levy.
Okay. And the, the page I'm looking at has a column that says 2010 proposed levy.
It's 41, 40, the net levy is 40,219.
But I meant 2011, I'm sorry. That's what I'm seeing is 2010. And what I'm asking about is, I thought, I'm not only asking about this for myself, because I'm confused, but we've advised people, the reason we are switching to a, a January 1 funding year, is so that the levy, we won't always have to be explaining that the levy is in a different year than you're being taxed for.
Right.
So what I'm asking is, if we are doing a 2011 budget for a new, one new fiscal year, why, why don't we have a 2011 proposed levy?
I understand.
I can answer that question. The, the budget that was adopted last year, you're levying that this November. We will catch up next year.
I, I know.
Okay? So, so your 2011 levy, your 2011 levy will be for the effective budget starting January of 12. Your 2010 levy is for the budget you passed last year.
Let's come back with a better explanation.
I, I understand what you're saying, but I still don't see why we can't show people.
Okay. We'll, we'll write it out for you.
Alderman Holmes.
I'd still like to see some, the possibility of license for rental properties as an, as another avenue for- another avenue for revenue and as well as license for home-based businesses, depending upon the size and type of home-based businesses, because they really do have an impact in the community in terms of parking and other issues. So that's two things that I would like to see in terms of possible new sources of revenue.
Alderman Tendem.
I have a question that goes back to page 42 of the, on the printed version. The, the transfer for, from a restricted fund for the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund of $100,000, you said there was a, over a million dollars or?
Two million.
Two million dollars in the fund. What, what, what is the name of that fund and what is it, what other restrictions or what, I don't know, other opportunities are there?
It's a designated fund for IMRF. And we can give you, we'll give you more detail about it, but it is a restricted fund and the proceeds of that fund are to be used for IMRF. So because we have the fund, we're recommending to use a portion of it, which is a very small portion, to offset the ERI liability payment.
What are the type of payments would you use it for?
And, and before we go further, our city treasurer, who is chock full of information on such topics, I think would like to give a more complete explanation.
Just, we use terms all the time and I don't want to confuse ourselves, I'm sorry, Adam Mayor, members of council. In this case, what we're talking about is a reserve account in the general fund. I'm sorry, Marty Lyons, the city treasurer.
Among other things.
The Early Retirement Incentive Program that was adopted a few years back and was refinanced recently is what we are referring to when we're talking of one potential use for the $100,000. Please remember that when we did refinance, we are actually saving dollars on the ERI. So this is just meant to point out to the council that, and I have it on page, I hate to give you another document, but on page 30 of the annual financial report, the audit, you can see that there is a $5.4 million unreserved designated fund balance. And that is composed of a reserve for IMRF and a reserve for compensated absences payable. We are recommending that we look at using the reserve for IMRF. And this is just what it is set up for. There is a reserve set aside in the event of economic issues or pension issues. Well, we have both going on right now, so this is the, the reason to use that $100,000 as a potential drawdown. And we can provide that in a memo to the council. I just wanted to make sure that there's no fund, it is inside the general fund, it is a reserved account.
And, and Madam Mayor, members of the council, just a couple of other words on this. As we've been preparing the budget and have been talking with some of you, especially those of you who have been on the council a fair amount of time, these designated portions of fund balance have not been widely discussed previously. And so we felt it was important that we widely discuss them with you. They are, they are prudent financial management tools, which Mr. Lyons has been in place for a, a number of years, that, that communities will put aside funds to help smooth impacts. And in this instance, the two reserve accounts, one for IMRF was meant in, in past years to smooth the impacts of changes. So if you had fluctuation that you thought was more or less one-time, you could go into this fund, the same thing with compensated absences. In the most ideal world, the way compensated absences should work is that every year you put aside in a separate fund the cash value of each employee's compensated absence. And then if that employee then uses that time off, you then take that money from the fund. So in theory, then, as employees have lots of time on the books upon retirement, rather than that coming out of the general fund to pay off, you pay it off from this fund. Unfortunately, that has not been the case in Evanston. So I think we're trying, as your staff, to point out money, first of all, because it's there and available, you, as the council, or previous councils have designated. It's not that it's been designated by anyone else. If you wish to use that money for other things, that's available to you. Our suggestion, however, is not to get, get too excited about this because it is only one-time money, it is available, and there may be other uses. As we look forward to what's going on in Springfield, my biggest fear is that will be a sudden take. And if that is a sudden take, it may be more prudent during the course of calendar 2011 to take whatever that money is as a one-time take. And if you have cash balances in order to do that, rather than stopping everything we're doing as a community, potentially laying people off in very short order because the state of Illinois is going to say money you counted on is no longer there, we would like to have some fund balance to do that. So you have a regular unrestricted fund balance, which we feel, and Mr. Lyons, it's at 16? Thirteen. And I think we're, and we're projecting it maybe as high as 16 at the end of the, of the fiscal year, which is more than the 8.3 of your budget policy and these additional monies. So we're proposing to start paying down the IMRF balance in this restricted account because that's just a good fiduciary responsibility, but we would not encourage the council to go too much furfield with it, other than to be aware that it is available.
Alderman Fisk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Alderman Holmes, I just wanted to clarify, when you were making the request for the, the rental licenses, were you meaning all rentals excluding owner-occupied buildings? I, I think I know where you're going with this, but?
Yeah. We, I'd have to go back and look at what we proposed in the beginning, but I think if it was owner-occupied, the two unit?
Right.
Then no.
Okay. Okay. Good. And then, city manager, I would just like, it would be helpful for me to have more information about the 3-1-1 program. Just the costs, the, just a Excel spreadsheet analysis of that would be really useful.
Alderman Winn.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going back to this restricted fund and I'd like to have the city manager explain to me, you, you said a number of things that I think are both good and bad. One was the use of the term one-time revenue, which I think is usually viewed by us as very skeptically. So I'd like to understand how, how this isn't, if it's, if it's a one-time revenue, how it might be different from the type of one-time revenue that we have traditionally tried to avoid? And whether, it sounds to me as though this is actually useful, but I want to understand better. And it sounds like it's one-time revenue over a course of maybe eight or 10 years. Is that correct?
Yes.
So if you could provide that in the memo and explain why this is fiduciary, from a fiduciary standpoint, a prudent thing to do when generally we don't view that as a prudent thing to do?
Yes.
Alderman Rainey.
On the same topic, you said, Wally, that the state, the state could take this money. What I don't understand, where is the money? Is it in a state fund or is it in one of our local banks?
Madam Mayor, Alderman Rainey, the state had talked about, and again, kind of trying to read a crystal ball that's extremely hazy right now. The governor back in March, when he had proposed his state budget, proposed a reduction in the subvention that we received from the income tax. So if staff could quickly look to see the dollar amount that we currently have budgeted total for income tax for next year? So we have over $5 million budgeted under the assumption that we are going to get a transfer from the state of Illinois for our income tax. A budget solution from the state could be next year, as was proposed by Governor Quinn back in March, that $1.7 million would not come. So from that $5 million, let's, let's round it for, for the, to two and say, instead of getting three mil, $5 million in revenue from income tax, we're going to get three. And so depending on when the state does that, we could be four months, five months, six months into our budget, we're assuming we're going to get that revenue and it's gone because the state's not going to transfer it to us per at least current law. So, so it's not, so it's not money that we're sitting on, it's money that we're anticipating to receive from them under current law.
That we then sit on, that we then put away for that. Okay.
Or that it's part of your budget, you're, we're going to spend it on police officers, firefighters.
I just couldn't figure out how they could come and get money that we already have because, I mean, I know that they do send money to us.
And I've worked in a state where they have sent a bill back.
I know.
So, I mean, that's not outside the realm of possibility, but I think we're anticipating that they would not send us money that we've already budgeted, that they were going to send us.
Alderman Rainey.
All right. I have a, a budget memo request, and that is, most people do not know that every month we remit to Cook County probably around $10,000 in parking taxes that the county imposes on parking garages. I would like our, our governmental relations person to begin, and I, I have tried to deal with Larry Sufferton on this, to begin working with the county to see if, or to work on excluding publicly owned, municipally owned garages from that tax. Every time I see this bill on the bills list for each of our city garages, it, it just irritates me. And so that's what I would like. I would like municipalities eliminated from this tax.
Excellent idea. Seeing no further lights at this point, I would like to discuss branch libraries because I, I am deeply troubled by the division that this has caused in the community. Ironically, libraries are supposed to promote a sense of community and that is not happening in Evanston at this point. So not trying to decide whether to have branches or not to have branches, but my goal being to heal the divisions in this community, I would like to throw out the idea that I think we need to have a referendum on the April ballot, asking the community, all of the community, whether or not they want to have branch libraries. And I trust Mary Johns could come up with a price tag as to what branches cost. But I think that both sides of the debate will agree, not happily, but will agree to live by a verdict of the entire community. Alderman Rainey.
When did a, when did a political campaign ever heal the divisions in the community?
I think we do believe in democracy and we would abide by it.
So you're saying it would be, it would be a mandatory, not an advisory referendum?
Well, I think it, whether it was advisory or mandatory, that we would want to live by it, yes. Alderman Burris.
I know you, you and I have chatted about this and I've thought long and hard about the notion of government by referendum over the past several days. And I think to California and the trouble that California is in because they have gone to a system of government by referendum, and it is a, is a problem. And I think we need to think very long about, are you elected to be a leader? Are you elected to make decisions for all of the community? And does this referendum hide, let us hide versus making a stance? And I'm not saying one way or another, I understand what the, the purpose is, the purpose is to try to give many elected officials an out. But as we know by data on voting, wealthier people vote more than people that aren't. Caucasians vote more than minorities. That's terrible. It's terrible to say, it's, it's, but it's the way it is. And if we don't take a leadership stance from people in wards that maybe folks won't come out and vote, maybe folks won't understand, I think that's a disservice. But I understand where the mayor's coming from. I think that you are trying really hard to do the, what you believe is the right thing and to open up for democracy. But how many people are not going to be heard here? I can't remember which prime minister said to the EU, "We know what the right thing to do is, but we don't know how to do the right thing and still get reelected." And I think that's where we are here. I just think, before we go down this road, let's look at our community and let's look at California and what they've done on the referendum side. And do we want to become a community when something tough comes to a politician, comes to this board? Do we want to say, "We're not going to touch it. This is too hot for us, it's too scary," and throw it back and constantly going back to referendums versus making a hard stance? So I appreciate, once again, the situation that definitely three of the Aldermen are in, that you have libraries in or near your ward. I appreciate this, the situation the mayor is in, I really do. I'm just not completely convinced this is the way we want to go. Thanks.
I would like to respond to that. I'm not doing this for political cover. I don't have to vote on this issue, so there is no political cover in this for me. And I am not proposing that we become like California. What I am proposing is that this has been an extremely divisive discussion and that I think the divisiveness needs to end. Alderman Tendem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I too agree with Colleen Alderman-Burris that we were sent here to represent our constituents. That is, to some degree, the evening of the process, when we have wards that have a better turnout in voting than others. And I also would like to note, too, what, we have a, a situation where the board has tentatively moved toward a fund model, and how does this impact that? I mean, are we, are we looking to allocate money for a year or a permanent or a percentage of the allowed state? I'm not sure exactly what we're going for here in terms of, are we asking just for the difference that it would take to run two, two branch libraries or to expand on that system? I'm not sure what we're going for, but I, I, I think it is getting very complicated and I, and I would like to see a simpler solution.
We're asking for a simple yes or no vote on whether or not this community wants to continue to fund two branch libraries.
What do we do in the meantime?
We certainly have the money to fund them till April and then we can look at the decision and respond accordingly. Alderman Rainey.
What do we do with this budget? Do we, let, do we project that the referendum is going to pass and therefore we have to include?
We have to. I believe we have the money, don't we, city manager, to fund the libraries if we so desired, instead of giving that money to the main library?
For approximately six months.
So we could?
But what do we do, what do we do when April comes? Do we, I mean, do we dip into the IMRF fund to fund the libraries? I mean, seriously, this, why, see, to me, the library issue's over. This, this only, this only drags it out, it just drags it out. There's going to be nasty campaigning. I mean, I've already been called a cyber bully because I don't agree with the branch love people who are about as unlovable as you can get. And I, you know, it just, it just, it's getting really old and boring. It is getting old and boring. The majority of this community does not want to pay for branch libraries. The, the people who use the North Branch Library want to pay for branch libraries, fine. I think what we need to do, if you're going to do a referendum, do a library district referendum and get it over with. Either the library has its own taxing body and its own elected people. I mean, just in the paper this week, it, it looks to me like the library board is now fighting among itself because somebody went off and hired a lawyer. And I, you know, I think we need to really take a look here at what's going on. If you want, if you want the library to run itself, put a, put a real referendum, not a touchy-feely referendum on the ballot. And that is, you want to change the form of government in the city of Evanston, you want the library to be a library district where we no longer will have to deal with library financial issues and they will have their own public, their own constituency, and they will be elected or unelected, defeated or, or. and they will be elected or unelected, defeated, or succeed in terms of whether or not they're going to be on the library board. And I would support that wholeheartedly. I would support a library district referendum in April, or whenever the election is. But I will, I don't, I mean, I'm, I will support putting it on the ballot, but I certainly will be going and voting no. But the library district is a whole other issue. I think it is a waste of taxpayers' money. It costs money, by the way, to run a referendum, to put a touchy-feely advisory referendum on the ballot.
Alderman Fisk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a couple of problems with this. I'm generally against the idea of referendums. I mean, like Alderman-Burris said, I think we were elected to make decisions, and, but I also think that we can actually have a more in-depth and comprehensive discussion about the libraries up here at council than we can have through a three- or four-sentence referendum on the ballot. I'm not even quite sure how we would word a referendum. I did speak to the mayor about that earlier, so that everyone would understand exactly what was going to be voted on. So I would prefer to keep that here at council, prefer to make the decision here, and as part of this budget process.
Alderman Shaw-Baptiste?
I'm still unclear as to what the state of the law is. So, assuming that we were to do a referendum, and on library district, which would be where I would, I would tend to, to go, and let's say that the, the law, you know, supports the establishment of a district to be able to fund levy, you know, taxes to fund the library system. I mean, we still need to clarify what the state of the law is. And I don't think we, maybe some of you know what it is, but I'm unclear. I've not been really given a clear analysis. I mean, I'm doing some independent research, but we've got to get clear. If the districts, if, if the board can establish such a district and levy taxes to support it, if that's the state of the law, what are we, you know, where do we go? If that's not the state of the law, you know, then I think we could go to a referendum. But if it's the law, how do we handle that? And I think we need to clarify that, and I don't think we can clarify right now, we've been talking about it. I think we need to have a definitive statement from the law department that's backed up by not only the statute, but case law, so we understand exactly where we are at. If we are in a position where we can make such a choice, then of course, referendum and all kinds of other tactics are appropriate. If we do not have such latitude under the law, what then do we do?
And Alderman Shaw-Baptiste, we'll redistribute the memorandums that we've done over the last year, so.
So do we think, is that very clear? I mean, who reviewed, who reviewed it?
The law department doesn't, no.
Huh? No, nobody's clear? So, we still probably need to get, receive the case, the history of the law, the case laws themselves, so we could review them and come to a determination ourselves, because apparently, whatever we've read didn't, didn't give us comfort one way or another. Unless there's somebody who's clear about it, can just articulate it right now, I would appreciate it.
Alderman Burris? You're next on the list you're not promised to be clear about.
No, I'm definitely not clear about it. I want to actually go back to something Alderman Rainey said about the, having a, a library district or a library SSA area. And I kind of equate that to Ridgeville. And maybe people in North Evanston do not know this, but many of us in South Evanston pay an extra tax for the Ridgeville Park District. You don't have to pay that tax. We're not asking you to carry our burden for our parks in South Evanston. But we do. We, we have this, this, this small park district, Ridgeville Park District, Pocket Parks, they have programs, but we pay for that because it's in our neighborhood. So once again, we're not asking you to pay for the parks in our neighborhood, just to be clear. I would support putting on an SSA for those folks that are actually using the, the libraries. And I know that the library branch love folks and library board have said, "No, no, no. We want everybody in Evanston to pay for our little campy branches that we basically are only using." So I don't see why the rest of Evanston should carry on our backs the financial burden for two libraries that basically serve a very small area. I mean, one of the, the things that the, the branch folks said over and over again is, "We like, we don't want to go to the main branch because we don't want to pay the parking meters." So that means that basically the folks using the main, the, the North Branch are walking to the North Branch. That's a really limited number of folks. But I, down on Main, or I live on Custard and Reba, I'm paying so folks can walk to their branch library. And I'm paying so folks can walk to the East Branch. It's not the South Branch, it's on the east side of Evanston. Why should all of my folks in the Ninth Ward, and the Eighth Ward, and part of the Fourth Ward, and the Fifth Ward, and the Second Ward be paying for your special camp in the East Branch and the North Branch? If you want to start paying for my Ridgeville Park District, bring it on. Please, give me your money. Let's do something. But let's do an SSA. If these folks want their libraries, and they want to tax us, and they want to keep us with this outmoded, dark ages way of looking at library delivery, it's not about bricks and mortar. It's about knowledge dissemination. We have to think differently. We are a cutting-edge community. Let's be at the forefront. Let's look at technology. How do we deliver services to all of our community, not the select few with a lot of money who don't care about added taxes? I still reel from the woman that got up and said, "Just don't go to Starbucks so much, and that'll be your extra taxes for the library." How insulting. How insulting to someone who can't pay their mortgage.
Alderman Rainey?
I read the city manager's carefully crafted statement regarding the library branches, and I think what I need are more numbers on that. I, I don't quite understand, especially after having this conversation, is money in the current, is money being requested in the current budget that would, if directed in that way, cover the cost of maintaining the branches for the 10 months in the fiscal year of the budget we're working on? And are you saying that even though that money is in the budget, you are recommending the branches be closed, and that money be directed to support of the main library? Is, is that really what you're saying?
Alderman Rainey, members of the council, the library's budget is basically flat from what was approved in February. So there is money for the main library and six months of branches. We're going into a 10-month fiscal year, so we are four months short of having money for a full year of branches. What I'm proposing is that the branches be closed, and that six-month dollar amount be used to support the main library only.
Okay, but if the mayor, so, okay, so, so, okay. If what the mayor is saying, putting a referendum on the ballot for April, since the budget doesn't cover money for the branches for the period of the rest of the year, then we would have to allocate, we would have to make arrangements to have that revenue, well, we can just cut a few more people, have that revenue in the budget to cover the branches should the advisory referendum pass.
That's correct.
Well, that's just nonsense, and I would hope that this council doesn't, I think it's hysterical, actually. This is just ridiculous. And mayor, I, I just so resent your bringing this up again. It's over with. The, but, the, the branches are closed. It's over with. All of the, all of the library envy that the community who supports the branches have and tells us how terrible job we're doing in funding the, the libraries, most, all the libraries they point to don't have branches. We're a small town, we don't need three libraries. People are desperate. We got $18.5 million because of foreclosures in two measly little census tracts. And we want to have three libraries so that a certain group of people can go and read the paper and use the internet? Ugh.
Alderman Tendem?
It's insulting.
I was hoping to avoid this conversation at this level, the yours and ours, and that, this is the beginning of the decisiveness that I had so wanted to avoid. I, speaking with the library, friends of the library and other members, we all agreed that nothing more could be said of our defense, because the, the numbers are out there. The numbers, and many of them contradict exactly what Alderman-Burris is saying about libraries of the future, and the potential for improving neighborhoods and business development, the fact that our, we have very precise records of the growth, and the people who are using the libraries aren't necessarily the people that live in that, in that neighborhood. People are getting off the trains, using, having access to computers, resourcing job, computers for job searching. And I think it's, it's unfortunate that, that it would have to come to another round, and I don't think it, can possibly let it come to another round of debating whether we should have those, or you should have this. I'm just, I guess I'm frustrated that I'm not, wasn't quite expecting the referendum motion, but it seems to me that we have a library board that could be trusted with a certain amount of money. The money is there. The, the difference between what the manager proposed, it is to fund the libraries this year, and what it would take to keep the branches open for a year, is quite, is quite little. It's about $150,000. And we have bigger issues to talk about, larger sums of money to talk about. For that kind of money, I think we could just say to the library board, "Do what you can with it. It'll be your choice." The Friends, I think, have offered to play a role as overseers of fundraising for, for collections and outreach, which I think they've done quite well. And I think that it puts everybody in the right place. It, it really does. And I see, it seems to me we could get by this without really, really dragging that into another topic that's going to dominate these entire budget discussions.
Alderman Fisk?
Thank you. Just a couple of points. Alderman Burris, we do have the Lighthouse Park District in northeast Evanston, which we pay for, a separate line item on our tax bill. I was the first one at the beginning of all these library discussions to ask for an SSA, ask for consideration of that, ask for staff recommendation, and I believe that was a positive recommendation, that that would be possibly doable. I'd like to ask the city manager to share that memo with the rest of the council, so they can look at, at it again. Generally, I have the main library in my ward, and I'm very interested in keeping the main library as viable and as open and accessible as possible to everyone. I, I do, however, think of the branch libraries in this term. They generate, if I'm, have these numbers correct, about 140,000 users combined per year. Is that accurate? Is that close? Okay, that's close, okay. Where I'm coming from is to look at libraries and their relation to economic development in Evanston. As a small business owner, I know that it's a huge risk to establish a small business in an area where you're not sure whether that business is going to succeed. You look to the businesses around you and the other uses around you to determine whether it's worth making that risk. And that's where I think the libraries are extraordinarily helpful. I think there's no question that the branch on Central Street does provide that assurance for business owners on Central Street, and I think that if the, the South Branch Library were moved either to Main Street or to Dempster Dodge, that would provide some reassurance to people who were willing to take a risk in starting small businesses in that area. So I would like to know if, I did send the city manager a, an article by the Urban Library Group that used to be located in Evanston and is now in Chicago, and I'd like to ask him to make that available to all the members of the council. We'll also try to post that on the First Ward website. But that's where I'm coming from in terms of the, of the branches. But I would definitely like to have another discussion about the SSA possibility.
Alderman Win?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, when I first turned my light on, I had something else I was planning to say, but as I listened to the discussion, I, I'm, like many of us, are just struck by how divisive this issue is when it shouldn't be. And it's unfortunate that we have this balkanization that's occurred, and I would like to get past it. I do think that the South Branch may play a somewhat different role than the North Branch. The reports that we've gotten on the number of people who've come in regularly looking for a job, or looking for computer access, who clearly don't have it at home, are, are striking, very, very striking. And I think that's a, a critical service that our library provides, and I am a supporter of the branches. What I'd like to do is somehow or other get past this discussion to really look at the new ways, the new evolution in library services throughout the country. Alderman Fisk is referring to this. Some of the community members have come forward to us and done the research, some of the research in terms of what new ways that libraries can be serving their communities. And it isn't just the old form that we are very used to. I would like us to be able to get to that point, where we are thinking creatively about the entire system that we have, and ways that we can continue our outreach to, to places that, that need it very badly, and also support our economic development. So my, my view on this is, I do, I think there's a lot of, I understand the mayor's point of view, because there seems to be this great misunderstanding, or I think folks in the community don't necessarily hear each other in terms of, the people who are proponents of the South, of the branches, don't recognize or don't think that there's anyone out there who doesn't support this, and the people who are opposed to continuing to fund the, the branches hear this, the, the branch supporters, but don't necessarily think that they're a very large group. So I understand the mayor's point of view was to try and clarify that for the entire community. I'm not sure that I think that that's the best method, because of just the divisiveness that's been created up here in this brief discussion about this. So I, I would like to continue to have the branches funded, but I really want us to look ahead at what we can do with our branches, and the tremendous support that we do have, not just our branches, but our entire library system. We do have this incredible amount of community support for our libraries that I hope will continue no matter what happens, because it's very important for us to continue to evolve. We think of ourselves as such a progressive community, and I don't necessarily think our libraries have kept up with that, because they've always been in the turmoil of our budget discussions. I'm not sure where I'm concluding, mayor, but those are my thoughts right now.
You're concluding at noon, which is when we're supposed to conclude. And seeing no further lights, if anyone wanted to make a motion to adjourn, we could do that. City manager?
Just, just two comments. First of all, Alderman Wilson left early, and he wanted me to let everyone know that he had an accident this morning on his bicycle, and thought that he was going to be okay, and decided to go to the emergency room after all. So he wanted to make sure that everyone was aware of that. And Madam Mayor, if I may end this meeting on a good note, it is the beginning of the second quarter, Northwestern 10, Michigan State nothing.
Oh, just my move. Mayor David Pope called me of Oak Park, and I didn't get to talk to him. I called him back, but he was on a conference call. He was very upset.